Seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, Winterfield Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. The order, uh, welcome to all our board members and staff and those in the audience. Uh, do we have any excuse, request for any excuse?
I have not received any excused requests.
See, uh, next item is approval of the agenda. You've had a chance to review it, uh, to you previously and we're recording it now. Was the pleasure of the board regarding the agenda for tonight. Motion approved.
Second.
Moving properly second, although as a failure, you can vote a sign of eye.
Aye.
Any opposed, you likewise. None opposed. Uh, new business, Villa Grand Phase Three Final Plat.
Good evening, board, and happy Saint Patrick's Day. So we do have two, um, items on the agenda tonight. The first one we are going to look at is Villa Grand Phase Three Final Plat. Villa Grand is located on Red Forbes Road. So Red Forbes Road is going north to south here. This is Villa Grand existing subdivision. Across the street, you've got Denali, um, just to kind of give you an understanding of where we're looking at. Applicant is John Thomas with Thomas Engineering. He's with us tonight if you have any questions. This is again located off of Red Forbes Road, just north of Villa Grand Phase One. It'll contain forty lots on twenty-two point seven three acres. One of the unique aspects about this subdivision and phase is, um, a fire lane that has been provided by the applicant, um, on this, uh, section. And I'll show you where that is and elaborate on that in a little bit. The zoning on this is an R-ten zoning district, so ten thousand square foot, uh, lots as a minimum. Again, just kind of looking at where we are here in Winterfield. This is, uh, the Phase Three that we are looking at around, uh, the purple outline. And this is Red Forbes Road going north to south right here. This is an overlay of the final plat as it would sit on the aerial. Um, always a little hard to look at that. I have provided a final plat in front of all of you to, uh, to provide a little bit more clarity in front of you. To give a little bit of a understanding, uh, how this development is gonna sit. There's gonna be forty lots that rest between this area right here. So you do have a little bit of wetlands that the applicant has left completely undeveloped and untouched in this area. Um, ensuring that no, uh, no one has to live in any floodplain or any field in this area. Um, because of the floodplain, there was not an easy way to provide a street, uh, for public access. At the time when we were looking at the, uh, preliminary plat, uh, the applicant proposed a fire lane right here so that if for whatever reason this road right here is ever blocked for any emergency reasons, then our fire access and emergency access vehicles can still get into this subdivision and get to all of the lots, which is a very important aspect of this, uh, phase of this development. So that is something that's very unique to this phase. Uh, looking at this right here, this is another image of just the final plat itself. Um, again, looking at forty lots right here with a fire access lane going right out to Red Forbes Road. Staff, uh, Technical Review Committee has reviewed Villa Grand Phase Three. It does meet all of our town standards and thus, um, staff does recommend approval of Villa Grand Phase Three. Are there any questions? Again, we do have the applicant here if there are any questions for the applicant too. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Find what our requirements are for the emergency fire lane.
So it has to support a certain weight, um, for the fire trucks itself. It has to be a certain width, uh, things like that. So it's meeting the fire code, uh, requirements for an access lane essentially. But it's an easement if, uh...
It's an easement, not being developed. But it's not just, you mean, allow some preparation of the car to take the weight?
I can ask the engineer if he, how the road itself was developed.
Good evening, John Thomas with Thomas Engineering. Your question is about the structure of the road for the fire access.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's, um, supposed to hold, I think, seventy-five thousand pound truck or something like that. The base is built just like we would any road. It's got six or eight inches of aggregate base course. It's not paved, it's just aggregate base course and it's twenty-six foot wide, uh, what the fire department asked for.
Any other questions for staff?
There being none, uh, was the pleasure of the board regarding the Villa Grand Final Plat. Motion approved. Moving properly second, all those in favor, you can vote a sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, none. You just like saying. None opposed. Uh, item two, South Brook, Phase Two Preliminary.
All right, thank you. And I do have a, uh, copy of the South Brook Preliminary Plat in front of you as well, um, just for a little bit of clarity. Okay, South Brook Phase Two Preliminary Plat. So we did see a version of South Brook Phase Two a few months ago. There was an aspect of the plan that did not meet zoning standard that night. Now, if you remember, at the same night, they were proposing a zoning amendment in which they were requesting to, uh, uh, receive approval for a zoning amendment that would in turn make that approvable. It was denied by Town Council and thus the applicant had to go back to the drawing board, uh, redraw this preliminary plat. It's gone back through town reviews, uh, processes and has been submitted today, uh, to meet the standard of the town. South Brook is located off of both Lori Ellis Road, which is, uh, east to west right here, and Church Street Extension, which is north to south on the boundary over here. Um, it's a large tract of land. We're looking at about two hundred and fifty acres. And again, it wraps from Lori Ellis Road all the way down to Church Street, uh, Church Street Extension. The applicant is Scott Moore of South Brook NCLLC. Again, this is located off of Church Street Extension and Lori Ellis Road. It's a two hundred and forty-five point four-three acre site in total. However, the phase that we are looking at tonight is one hundred and eighty-seven point five-eight acres of this site. So thus far, this development has been preliminary platted in two phases. So the first phase we saw about a year ago, it was the, uh, land just immediate, uh, adjacent to Church Street and just immediately adjacent to Lori Ellis Road. This preliminary plat fills in everything from those two phases. And I'll show you that as we, uh, as we move along tonight. Um, the zoning for this was a conditional District R-six and multifamily residential that was approved by Town Council, January twenty twenty-three. Now, the reason why this site is a perfect candidate for a PUD as designed tonight is there are a significant amount of environmentally sensitive sites on this, or land on this sites and other, uh, other, uh, things that you have to design around such as the, uh, gas easement. Thus, with a PUD, it allowed the developer to cluster the developments into smaller areas to ensure that we were not developing on any wetlands or poorly, uh, uh, soils, poor land in this area. And with this clustered development, it created a density similar to an R-ten or R-twelve. So it looks like the land would, would look like density wise if there was not a PUD and if it was zoned, kind of how it would typically be zoned, R-ten, R-twelve, five in that area. If anybody has any questions, I know I'm kind of getting a little bit deep into the weeds and I'm sorry, but let me know if you do have any questions. Um, for Phase Two, there are three hundred and thirty-six single-family detached lots and forty-four single-family attached lots. In total for Phase Two, it's four hundred and thirty-four residential units. In the total development, we're expecting six hundred and twelve total units. Within this phase, uh, the single-family detached lots will average eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one square foot a lot. And the single-family a lot, attached lots will feature two thousand two hundred square foot per lot. The preliminary plat also proposes eleven point four-five acres of recreational land. Um, of course, we will look at the, uh, final plat for the recreational, uh, dedication, um, for the subdivision ordinance to determine what is actual recreational land for the final plat. But it just shows that this development is going above and beyond, bringing some recreational, some community elements to this, uh, to the subdivision as well. Again, I just wanted to kind of show an overview of its location. Uh, Church Street running, uh, north to south, Lori Ellis running east to west. The final plat, or the preliminary plat, uh, overlaid on the aerial, um, cuts off the first phase roughly right here. So the first phase of this preliminary plat was approved last year and carried this subdivision from, uh, Lori Ellis Road into Phase Two here. Phase Two then continues through different streets and, and connections all the way to Church Street Extension right here. So all of this, um, will be filled in from, uh, Church Street Extension to Lori Ellis Road, which is a, a huge aspect of this development. As a planner, I'm extremely excited to see, uh, a site like this be able to be developed as a entire project as we see tonight. Um, right here, again, this is just the front page. You have this in front of you with a lot more clarity. It shows us the Phase Two Preliminary Plat with the, um, different, uh, phase lines in there. So it will be phased in its development. All of it will not be, uh, found, final platted at one point. Uh, this is, uh, zooming into, uh, one of the sections. This is actually the western section. Uh, what I do want to point out here is this future development. This was the area of zoning, uh, issue that we had at the previous submittal. The applicant went ahead and removed the single-family attached in this location. Uh, they are going to revisit, uh, zoning in the future and, and look at, uh, bringing this in as the third phase of the development as expected. Um, but right now they have removed it so that they can go ahead and start building in this development and start getting some houses on the ground. Town really needs it as well. Um, this is looking at the, uh, eastern portion of Phase Two. So we're continuing to Lori Ellis this way. Again, um, showing some stubs to neighboring properties, just planning on future development in this area. In fact, this area will probably be seeing some, uh, re-zonings around this site in the near future as we're, we're receiving significant phone calls, uh, on adjacent properties. Looking at the cross-section of the street, one thing that makes this, uh, neighborhood, uh, another kind of unique, uh, addition to the town is it's gonna have street trees throughout the subdivision, which is something we don't really have right now in a subdivision. So I'm, I'm really excited about seeing that. Another thing is there's gonna be a green separation or, or tree separation between the road and the sidewalk itself, which creates a very pleasant walking experience, especially for kids who are, you know, first trying out bikes and things like that. It kind of creates that safety net, um, between the pedestrians and the cars. South Brook Phase Two has gone through our Technical Review Committee and it meets all town standards. Therefore, town staff does, uh, recommend approval of South Brook Phase Two. Um, we have the applicant here, Scott Moore. If anybody has any questions, um, or if they have any questions of staff, please let me know.
You know, I would get...
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Uh, visitor parking. Let me understand with the nose, no, um... Shoulder on the street. Cause there's a gutter, need space. Visitor parking must be in the driveways of the people that visit?
Well, I will say, our, our zoning ordinance does require a single-family detached to have at least two off-street parking spaces. Obviously nowadays, most homes have a lot more than just two spaces. So something like this, you will see mostly off-street parking, so people parking in, uh, their driveways. The applicant has provided some, um, additional parking. So in this right here, I don't know if you can see it, but there's a pool that has some guest parking. And each of the single-family attached, that was actually a very important aspect of, uh, some of our staff. Some of our staff, when, uh, the applicant was first, uh, showing the single-family attached, they said, "We really need some guest parking for single-family attached." Um, it was not a requirement of the ordinance, but the applicant came and threw in guest parking at all of their single-family attached locations as well. So they have at least accounted for it with single-family attached. Single-family detached, um, would be a combination of, uh, off-street, on, you know, on-street, off-street and, uh, some added guest parking spaces. Would you like to add anything else, John? Okay.
Do you have any visuals, like the, the, the actual, you know, the visuals?
I don't unfortunately. In fact, we haven't even gotten to the point where I've seen any, um, elevations of the homes yet. Um, so I, I haven't. Uh, uh, we have the applicant here, he can certainly comment on that if...
Good evening, everyone. Scott Moore, South Brook, uh, NCLLC. The, uh, we have not secured the building contracts yet. The most important part for us and for builders, for us to even move forward with builders is making sure we have the, the land plan approved and this was the next step. So we don't have any elevations to provide because we don't have the builders in this yet, so just want to let you know.
And what was the final answer regarding the spaces? Regarding the parking spaces for the...
The guest parking spaces?
Yes.
There are some guest parking, uh, lots created. So they created guest parking lots for all single-family attached areas. There are, there is one guest parking space kind of in the center where the pool is. Um, but most of it will be off-street, uh, private parking in this area. Do you have any plans for, or anything of, above and beyond that? Okay. And she, and he said that there will also be garages for each of the units as well.
Um, if, uh... All right, so the, from the looks of the plan for the tree planting area between the street and the sidewalk, is that gonna allow enough driveway length for the guest parking on that side of the street? Because you're taking up quite a bit of space on one side for that, that tree line. And my understanding is if a car is parked and it's blocking the sidewalk, that that's a by, a town violation. So is there gonna be enough room in there for the guest parking if, if the homeowners don't park in the garage?
So I think as we have it right now, we have at least a depth for two vehicles to be parked in the driveway side by side so that does not block the sidewalk. We don't have a depth for four-vehicle parking. So right now it is, I think it's at least eighteen feet of depth from the garage to the back. So whatever typical car that's there will not end up blocking the sidewalk.
What is the width of the roads?
Have a flip. Right there. So twenty-eight feet back to back on the curb. So twelve-foot, twelve-foot lanes on both sides and then taking in two feet of curb on both sides as well.
Fairly normal for the parking in our town, man.
Pretty typical of what you see in all of our subdivisions as well.
The parking on the curb, curb side would not really be a major issue for guests.
For temporary purposes, we see a lot of people park in front of, in front of the house and then they end up leaving for, for guest purposes. We would not want this for residents, so...
I have another question concerning the gas line that is running through the property. Where is that located? And does it run underneath of homes?
So it, it does not. That's actually, um, there's a ton of regulation on that gas easement and a huge buffer from it. So from the, you know, the center of the easement itself, the buffer's, uh, fairly wide that you can't do anything but kind of cross with a, a street at a ninety-degree angle kind of is, is from my understanding. But let me try to...
Well, the, the Noose River Buffer, I see that. I know that's gotta be fifty foot. That's fifty foot on either side or fifty foot on either side? And I see where it crosses the street twice.
And this, uh, so you can see where the land is actually disturbed on the aerial.
Right.
This is where the gas easement actually runs on that site.
Does it run the same as the Noose River Buffer?
No, it would not, no, sir.
But that looks just like a Noose River Buffer to me.
Um, the other thing that was extremely important for us is to not have any lots, any lots located in that buffer. So the gas line is, is just located in one long strip of open space with zero building and also no lots. So you won't have any fences or any accessory structures go anywhere in it. So that was, that was important to that we don't have any encroachment on that easement. And when we spoke with, uh, PMOT, they were, they were excited about that part of it, which we have other communities that have gas lines that we don't want anybody encroaching and doing anything in there.
Well, I noticed on the drawing, it shows this line here, which looks like it's an offshoot from the Noose River Buffer.
It would just be a coincidence in that case. They would be separate buffers for different purposes. Yes, sir.
Okay. Cause I don't see a buffer on that one. I just see a line of the, what looks like it's coming off the Noose River, like a ditch.
That's right, yes, sir.
That would just be a drainage.
That's right. That takes it all the way to the Noose.
Okay.
I have a question. The pool you're talking about, uh, let's see, um... Is that part of the eleven point four-five recreational areas that you...
Yeah, it would be, yes, sir.
So basically that, however much, however many acres that is, how many acres is that?
He's, he said the representation of the pool on that is around two or three acres, that aspect of it.
So basically you're looking at a, you've got, still got eight or nine acres left of recreational area. You, where is, where is that? Point that to me.
One major part that we're focusing, and we haven't, again, we get on site and we build the open spaces around the features of the site itself. We do know that this right here is gonna end up being one of our water quality ponds and something that we focused on pretty heavily. When we were here before, we wanted to have just the trail system that ran through this road and staff wanted to see a full-size road, but we left this, started this little opening right here. And there's another little opening here. We envisioned having some sort of walking trail amenity that connects up to both roads and then also around the pond as well. So we're looking to take full advantage of that big space as being a big usable, open space for our residents as well in addition to the pool site. And then there's, throughout the development, we have little pocket parks that we'll be building. Also in the townhomes, they will have their own individual parks as well. All of it available to all the residents that will be there, all encompassing about that eleven acres that we talked about in improved areas. And Phase One also has pocket parks and the ones that were already had been approved. So that's kind of a, a part of all of this as well.
I have a cou- I have a couple of questions. Um, so what's your average HOA fees going to be for this development?
Um, we'll have to see what the improvement costs are in terms of, of maintenance. That's the other big thing. The other thing is now that you have these ponds, they have to be controlled by the HOA. They're inspected annually and improvements have to be done there as well. So we're a little early for that as I don't know exactly how the spaces will be fully improved yet, but will be improved. Um, well, once we have that, we also need to make it so that it's within market range as well. So we're not out, you know, we, we don't want people to come in and then get, have massive dues that they can't, you know, otherwise afford. So that needs to be set at a market rate and it needs to cover all the, all the maintenance costs for the future.
That includes the trees?
So the, yes, yeah, that's right.
And so what's the average square footage of the houses being built?
We don't, we don't have it, I mean, I think we, we, that a minimum for our PUD was, was eighteen hundred square feet for single-family, uh, detached and sixteen hundred for attached. That's the bare, that's the minimum. Everything will go up from there. And we're envisioning in the larger lots up at, at, at the top of Phase One or Sixties, they'll, they'll be even larger as well. So we can have a diversified, single-family detached product that's built throughout the community. So on Church Street, we have fifty-foot lots who have a little bit smaller and then the rest of them average out at about fifty-five feet. So we'll, we should have not just the same housing type, but different housing types throughout this six hundred and twelve.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have another question. Will they also have streetlights? So I live in one of the subdivisions, um, closed and they, we don't have trees, but we have streetlights that, uh, obviously come on. It's a particular...
Absolutely, and I think even part of the utilities is covered with having streetlights.
So on this, on the same side as the trees or will they just...
They typically stagger it. Um, is that how you're planning on doing it, this subdivision?
They do. We'll plant one with tree placement, making sure that we don't have trees directly in the place. So we have enough space in here.
And what I mean by staggering is, uh, certain distance, they'll put on this one and the next one would be on the other side. You know, the distance, right, on this, on the street. Some subdivisions will do it on one side. It's kind of, uh, uh, developers', um, preference sometimes. But typically nowadays, you'll see it staggered.
Oh, gotcha.
Down the street.
Yeah, well, maybe, uh, wooden poles?
It's up to the applicant. So there's two different styles that they can go with. They can go with our decorative pole, which is generally what everybody goes with nowadays, or the wooden pole. But nowadays, it's, if you go around the neighborhood and you'll see something that's not a wooden pole, then that's our decorative pole and, and that's, every developer goes with that nowadays.
Last question. Just about how long do Woolies project take to complete?
Depends on market absorption, right? How fast we end up selling lots and how, how many homes are built. We initially set out for the project in total, which is probably pretty aggressive, around ten years. Probably envisioning that it'll probably kick up to around twelve, a little bit more because that's over sixty lots of being purchased a year, which is, is a bit gre- aggressive for the market, but I think that's something that we can achieve through the type and what we're building with the open spaces, the street trees, the product that we're bringing in. We feel like we'll, we'll handle a good market share.
I have a question directly to you. Are any plans being made where if you're looking at between the, the four hundred lot? Any projections or... About doing any of our fire protection for this area?
About fire protection for this area?
Cause it's getting more remote from our fire station. Cause I went to the town board meeting, uh, they said about coming to support that. Yeah, I have nothing to add.
So once they annexed, it would be within town of Winterfield's Fire District. Um, as far as whether they're planning on a, a substation or something right there, I haven't heard anything announced for that. I know that the town and the fire department is looking at finding some locations for substations, but I would certainly have to bring in the fire department for, uh, the full answer on that one, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
I got a question, another question. Um, regarding the pool, so is that included with every, every house has to pay Homeowners Association? Or is that separate? They join if they want to?
We've done it in both ways. What we're envisioning here is that it will be a part of the Homeowners Association dues and everybody will pay into it as a, as a owner and everybody will be a part of it. I think that's the best way to do it, to ensure the long-term, a long-term stability and maintenance of that pool, is that we have constant income that takes care of that every year and not just a membership-based. It'd start getting in trouble if we allow people to just pick and choose if they wanted to join and the rates, that would have to be so much higher to be able to maintain that. So I think a neighborhood pool is what would need to happen in this instance.
Totally agree. That's good. And let me ask you this, so is, is your group, they determined that they wanted a pool?
That's correct.
And, and a, and a greenway? And whatever else recreation, y'all decide that?
That's correct. And that's, we base it, when you get over five hundred homes, typically when you're building subdivisions like this, you want to have a pool facility. You need to have some sort of pool facility to offer to that. And you need to start providing amenities that will be able to have places that call. And we talked about this when we first did the PUD, destinations where people can walk. That's why we have this, this, that's why we have the sidewalks. We want people to be able to walk to these locations, enjoy and be able to walk back home, not have to go and park at these places and drive back home. So we wanted this to be a very walkable community. That was the purpose of all of it. So, and we wanted to put... So, and we wanted to put open spaces throughout all of the sections so that you didn't have to walk clear across the neighborhood to get, be able to get there. That's why the pool is in the center of the community, easier for everybody to be able to walk to. And that's why some of these other amenities are also very centralized so that people can get to them.
Y'all take recommendations?
Sure.
Is it too late for that?
It's.
Here, here's my, here's what I have to say about that. It's just that a pool is great and I'm all for it. It's only open three months of the year. Am I wrong?
It's typically from May to the beginning of October.
Memorial Day to Labor Day.
That's right.
Three months out of twelve, which is great. I mean, it's, it's good to have a pool. Might I suggest a gathering point, two or three tennis courts, open all year long?
Well, the other aspect too is putting a, a potential playground in this area as well. I mean, that, that way, and this area will also be utilized, um, we'll have all of the mail kiosk will be there. So people will be coming into this location. It's why we have the parking spaces as well. So we are looking for that pool to have multiple purposes.
Gazebo maybe or?
Something like, I mean, there, there will be something other than just a pool. I mean, it'll, it'll have to be, just like that area that's through the SWQ, we'll, we'll, we'll have areas where people can gather and do things. That's part about making these destinations is not just so people are just walking, so they have something to do while they're there.
Well, I just wanted, as I finish up, just to state this fact to you that as your group puts in neighborhoods, the tennis courts are, are a valuable asset that are open twelve months of the year. Just as a fact to know that North Carolina has now taken over as number one in tennis for the nine states in the southern region. So the South Carolina and Georgia have been typically one and two. North Carolina has taken over. And you've probably been from Chapel, recruit from Chapel Hill, know that. Metropolitan areas are, are booming and they do not have enough courts, but they have so many players. So I would suggest something that is twelve months. That's just my suggestion.
Year-round use is what you're, is what you would want to see.
Exactly.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Steven, I think this question may be for you as a general question, but.
Yes, ma'am.
It applies to this project rate. What is the new thing with neighborhoods not having individual home mail receptables now, but the kiosk?
Yeah, well, I don't know if it is an easy answer. Yeah, the postal service has required it now. Um, any new, uh, addition to, uh, and exist, in fact, somebody was asking about Cornerstone the other day. Cornerstone literally had the entire subdivision done. There was a tiny little loop with eleven houses and it was required in that. So they're requiring it with everything. There, the theory, at least from my understanding, is, um, over time, they're actually planning on doing away with individual mailboxes in front of people's houses and doing, and retrofitting for clusters to save USPS, uh, time, um, instead of going to each.
Instruction going forward?
All of them going forward, yes. But, um, I've heard rumor that they would like to one day retrofit neighborhoods to have cluster boxes as well. Now, when or if, who knows? But I understand, you know, i- it would be a lot easier to stop at one location and go to all the boxes rather than each individual house. But, um, the, it is nice to have a mailbox in front of your house too. That's a great question because the packages are still being dropped off by like Amazon and stuff like that, whether you have a mailbox anyway. Right. Now, and, and I know that those cluster boxes too will have a communal package box. And what they'll do is they'll drop the key into yours and then that lets you know to open up the, the big package box. But, um, I don't, I don't know the, the whole future of, um, how they're going to do it from now on. But, yeah, that's a big change over the past three years.
I have a, in the communities that we've built out west, they, they would not allow individual boxes going back five and six years ago. So they have been that, they have been ramping it up that much. So in fact, no communities that we've built have had individual boxes since that time.
Any further questions, discussion regarding Southbrook Phase Two Preliminary Plat? If you're none, it was the pleasure of the board regarding this recommendation.
Make a motion to, that being recommendation as presented.
Second. Moved properly second. All those in favor, you can vote and sign a by.
Aye.
Any opposed, you can likewise sign. Staff report.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, staff doesn't have much tonight. I, I want to give an update. Price Covenant School is expanding off of Worthington Road. I think I mentioned that last time. We have a Glow Med Spa who is coming over where the Lowe's Foods is, which is a, um, a spa that also does light medical things as well, like Botox and, um, cosmetic, uh, things. Um, Hot Works is going over there near Lowe's Foods as well, which is a gym in which you go into a room, they turn up the heat really high and then you work out. I don't know, much more than that, other than it's, uh. Yeah, it's interesting. Um, and then if you haven't, if you haven't gotten a chance, on Jones Street, there is a, a small project of five homes, uh, being developed where, um, uh, Winterville Manor used to sit, which was a, a retirement home. Um, just wanted to kind of point that out, that that's a unique project. Anytime you get those infield developments that takes, uh, existing, uh, use that has seen its, you know, age, you know, come to an end and then somebody come and, and redevelop it and improve the neighborhood like that. Uh, as a planner, that is one of the coolest goals I, I've seen in a while. Um, I'm really excited about that one. If you get a chance, go check out those houses. It's really cool, really good addition to the neighborhood. Um, other than that, does anybody have any questions for staff? Um, if not, then we will see you next month. Yes, sir.
I have, uh, some, is there business for staff or new business, whatever you want to do? Uh, what, can I speak? That's coming, something new?
Uh, well, right now we're at a comment session for members.
Okay.
If you want a new business we had.
I have a comment again. Um, and I don't want to dwell on this point, but I do sort of want to dwell on it. Just to give you some, some background, but I, I think, I don't know if, if we can do this or not. I don't know how our planning board works. I mean, y'all can tell me. But can we require, make some kind of rule or, I'm sure we can do whatever we want to. The town can do whatever we want to, but we require tennis courts? Or if you decided to say basketball courts or whatever, instead of allowing, um, groups to come in and they put what they want to, can we require or make the suggestion that this is for every neighborhood should have when they come in? I'm just asking the question. I'm, I'm just, uh, curious about that. Because I can tell you in Atlanta, which I know is a million to millions of people, but they planned early years and years ago. And I'm just going to tell you that they have, every neighborhood has at least teach tennis courts. And they have, it has become so popular because of that, that they have, I, I don't want to go into detail, but they have league players and people that teach tennis bid to teach tennis. They're paying five, ten thousand dollars to teach tennis at those tennis courts in that city. Now, I know we're not Atlanta, but they started years ago when they were young. And if we don't have, we need tennis courts. Sure, I am prejudiced for tennis courts. You may want basketball court, you may want something else, but can we do that with neighborhoods coming in? They're building a pool, which is using, which is great. I, I like the pool, but again, it is only three months out of the year. Are we allowed to do that?
I highly doubt it, but I can look into it. Yes, sir.
I know it's, it's done at other cities and I don't know how that works.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? There being none, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moved improperly second. All those in favor, you can vote and sign a aye. Opposed, you're welcome, staff.